I hope you can, uh... Get it. I guess it's going live, right?
Yeah. It's live, on tape.
Memorex.
Live, on tape.
We're gonna burst the glass.
Okay, I believe we're ready to open up the November 25th work session in which the St. Charles County budget will be discussed and I think there's two ways to go about this. You know, one is, in the past, we've gone department by department, which we can certainly do. And then the second, I think, is to get some specific questions that certain councilmen have, you know, answered maybe prior to doing that rather than maybe getting bogged down with, you know, in the middle. So would you suggest the specific questions?
Terry?
Yes, sure.
Mr. Bamer and I had a very good conversation this afternoon and I guess I'd like to make the rest of the council aware of it concerning the construction management, construction manager that we used to have in the county government, then it went away for a while and it came up in our discussions with the development of the Bromley-Sick Park. And Don, I guess I'll invite you just to fill the rest of the council in on the same things that we talked about, just so everybody stays on the same page. I'd ask Don specifically if it was discussed during the budget appropriations and all the work that Steve and Joanne and everybody else has put into it and what was the current viewpoint on construction manager? And Don and I had a very good productive conversation this afternoon, so.
Okay. As councilors aware, there were some questions that were raised relative to the construction arrangement at Bromley-Sick Park. Some were very legitimate questions, I think, were asked. We've reviewed the situation in light of the comments by both the council as well as Rocky and Morgan, our staff, and we met internally to discuss perhaps a better way to do it. We reviewed the upcoming construction projects for the year 2014 and we anticipate that there are two projects that will be forthcoming in 2014 that we thought a construction project manager could be useful on. One is a Hayes Park project and the other project is a jail renovation project that's somewhat complex. Beyond that, there really didn't look like there were any major construction projects slated for '14, so what we decided to do, in part both as an experiment but also perhaps for a longer-term arrangement, in the very near future, meaning in the next few weeks, we probably are going to be going out with an RFQ for construction management services by a consulting firm. We thought with these two projects, they're diverse enough that we could make them a good test case. One will involve a lot of technical things related to the jail and electrical and things like that. The other is a lot of land development, obviously, with the Hayes Park. So we're meeting internally. A team of us are gonna meet to talk about a scope of services and put the RFP on the street as soon as possible. The design of Hayes is actually in the process of being selected. There's a firm that they've been talking to, trying to negotiate with, to do the design of Hayes. I would like to see us get this project manager on board as quickly as possible at the beginning of the design so they could additionally provide us with consultation as to how that design perhaps ought to be approved, either in phases or projects, separate projects, things like that. So we're moving forward with that with the anticipation of having a consulting firm on board in the, let's say, the next couple of months as Hayes unfolds. The jail, I believe Joanne will follow later, but the internal team includes both people in Rocky's department as well as Highway, Parks, people that are, Mike Buford's department, people that are used to doing construction projects. So we want to get the scope of services right and we want to use these two as the basis of going forward, whether or not we use consulting firms or whether or not we, at some point in time, have enough projects where we feel the need to hire perhaps a project manager and some sort of staff assistant for that.
And if I could add to that, a couple of weeks ago, Councilman Cronin talked to me about the fact that he would like to have a work session about the overall park development and what parks were slated and what was gonna be in them so that you all had a better understanding of, you know, why certain monies getting proposed to be spent on development as opposed to maybe more land acquisition. I shouldn't be speaking for you, you're sitting here, but... And I told him that we would schedule that right at the beginning of the year and I spoke with Steve about it and he said it was fine to do that. And that should coincide with about the time when they know who they want to recommend as the design firm for Hayes and give you a chance to see what kinds of things the Parks Director is looking at overall in the development of the Hayes, Mattson Parks. But, you know, as you said, you'd like to see sort of the overall plan for the whole thing, you know, when they're anticipating development would be of the park. So we'll be ready to do that. So that piece will get an additional highlight. And then on the jail, you know, we can't wait too far past the beginning of the year because part of that jail project was supposed to be happening in '13, but because they realized that the electrical system in the jail was so undersized for some of the needs that they have over there, Mike proposed that the renovation of booking, of central control of the medical areas, as well as then the need to deal with the electrical system would be a single project in '14. So we're gonna be looking at, you know, construction management with that through this process.
I would add that we'll talk to the team, the staff team about this, but it may be such that we could give a listing of the type of projects that we anticipate and combine this process into a RFQ whereas we could perhaps enter into contracts with either one or two consulting teams based upon the qualifications that they put forth. So we may not have to do a separate RFQ for the jail. If we can properly pick the scope or the general project, they can submit their projects that they have to experience on and we would be able to utilize that in the selection process.
Very good.
Yes.
If I could just touch on that a little bit, you know, other than hiring a construction management, manager, okay, could we not just go out for general construction or, you know, general contractor services along with a bid? And what I'm driving at is if you look at what they're doing down at the arch grounds right now, they've had a paper, they're cutting that thing, that project up into like 12 or 13 pieces to make it more manageable. But like, for instance, in Bromley-Sick, if we went out for general contractor services, all the things that might, you know what a general contractor pulls everything together, and had had that one bid, then had a bid for the roadwork and a bid for the renovations to the house and maybe a bid for the electrical, a bid for landscaping, you know, I'm just wondering if that would be a lower cost method of doing those things. And the other thing is, the reason I ask, talk about this in a work session is, I think the road board in this county has a very good job of deciding which road projects get funded. I'm wondering, I'd like just to know that the Parks Board is looking at all the different parts projects and see if that's what we want. Do we want another old house fixed up or do we want more open ground? Do we need more in Harvester and less out in my district but more where the holes are at in the district? And I don't know how that process works, but I would like to know that because we're spending a lot of money in parks. And that being said, we can talk into the family arena as we go into this.
The Parks is an advisory board and yes, they, you know, we ask them for their opinions and then, of course, Betty usually comes to us and then we send it to you. So, I mean, it's, there's no, I guess the final decision has to be made by you all. If you'd like to see us go in another direction, you know, as a board, you know, that's something, you let us know, but we can't do anything unless you approve it. And I will tell you that, you know, it's just, it's been a few years. We should get Betty in here and get a better idea where she'd like for us to go. But I will tell you, we've been pretty good about adjusting. When I first came on, we were in a building mode and then the economy with, you know, with the housing bust and everything, we started thinking, listen, land is gonna be cheaper now than it was five years ago and probably cheaper than it's gonna be five years from now. So we sort of just switched directions and went into a more of a buying mode rather than a developing mode. And that's when we bought the property out in Numely and...
Two properties out there.
Several, yeah, two out there.
The property adjacent to Spurton.
That's when we built, we bought Hackman. We bought Hackman about that time. So, yeah, I mean, if you'd asked what was our plan 10 years ago, it wouldn't include, the Numely Park wouldn't include Hackman. We would probably, we would've had Bromley-Sick finished by now, but there was kind of a decision made by us and the council that let's go ahead and buy land because we can probably get it cheaper now. Now, I think, you know, the price of land's gonna start going back up and we gotta decide when we've got enough. But I guess I'm saying, I think we need to have a plan. You guys need to know about it, but I think we need to be flexible.
Going back to that, Steve, it's kinda like on capital improvements budgets, there's eight million earmarked for Hayes, okay? Are we smart putting that eight million in Hayes or would we be better off taking that eight million dollars and buying more land? And I don't know the answer to that, but I think it's something to discuss. And like, for instance, in Hackman, I know that property, every inch of that property, the ground costs 500 and some thousand and some change, there's a million capital improvements to improve that. Babe Hackman would not understand how you put a million dollars in her farm, but then again, there's also ground right across the road from it that I think could be bought for a million. Maybe that's smarter to buy more land. I don't know that...
This is broadcast, it's just one twenty million five.
The answer to your question is what land and for how much. So, yeah, we can't buy any land unless you guys agree. And so, I mean, if that's something you want us to look at, we should look at it.
I'd just like to hear that discussion, how, you know...
Yeah, I mean, we should compare that to some of the other things. There's nothing, there's no, nothing inevitable here. You know, we're gonna not bring it out to you unless we think it's something that you all would like, but even when we get it out here, I mean, you still have to approve it. And if you think we ought to be going in another direction, let's sit down and talk about it.
I think the next, like I say, I got some emails, I think we all got some emails about questions that was, you know, about the budget and so on. I think one of the ones that I'd kinda like maybe to start off with was the question you had about county indebtedness, okay? And I think that may have to be a good place to, maybe a good place to start where we're at, you know, kinda reiterate what you asked for.
Bob split together some things around that. I pass that on. In general, there's three indebtednesses that the county have, and we talked about two of them and I missed one. The radio bonds, the arena debt, and then the MIDS. I forgot about that. They're dedicated source to...
The MIDS.
MIDS, Neighborhood Improvement Districts.
Thank you.
For roads and sewer upgrades.
So this is an overview of the debt that we have. None of our debt is paid out of the general fund, first of all. First of all, the radio and arena bonds were both refinanced, well, the radio bonds initially were financed in 2010. We caught the markets at a good time when interest rates were low. And certainly the timetable, that project initially was a lot quicker than it's turned out to be. We were supposed to have started this project a year ago almost, right? We're having it placed almost a year ago. But, be that as it may, the tax source for this bond issue is the, so it's one-twentieth of one percent where we had voluntarily rolled back our capital improvements sales tax in 2007 from a quarter of a cent to a fifth of a cent. And we asked the voters in 2009 to reinstate the quarter cent sales tax rate, capital improvement sales tax rate, and that one-twentieth of one percent increase back to the quarter cent is what is funding the debt service on the radio project. The arena bonds, we also refinanced in 2010. We kept the original term of the bonds intact and kept the maturity the same at 2025, but again, seizing the opportunity for the markets and where they were, we were saving in excess of a million dollars over the remaining term of the bonds by doing that refinancing then. So that was just a cost-saving move, nothing more. The arena bonds are paid out of the capital improvement sales tax fund also. And here, I'll give that to you, John, if I can get one of those from somebody. The last component of the debt is the Neighborhood Improvement Districts. And those bonds, while they are general obligation bonds of the county, it's the full faith and credit of the county that backs up those bonds, but they are really paid for by revenue that comes from assessments on your real estate tax bill. If you live in a NID district for an improvement to a street, sewer system, whatever, the annual assessment is added to your real estate tax bill and those assessments are what pay the debt service on these bonds. The only time that we would ever pay anything on these bonds would be if, for some reason, somebody defaults in the payment. And the lien on these properties remains through a succession of owners, so they don't go away with a particular owner. So you can see there that we've got about 7.4 million of dollars of original debt issued and 4.489 million right now remaining on those bonds. And the first NID on the books at this point started in 1998. The last was in 2009. We probably will have another NID issue coming up within the next year, from what I'm hearing, where we have a couple of projects that we're talking about pulling together into a NID issue and look forward to that perhaps in 2014. The time is uncertain yet as to when we'll actually do that, but that could be coming soon. Annual payment on those NID bonds typically is $486,000 next year in the 2014 budget. So that's the source of our entire indebtedness at this point in time. And if you have any questions about it, I'll be happy to answer them for you.
No certificates of participation or that stuff?
No. We had certificates of participation with the 2005 refinancing of the bonds for the Family Arena and the original bond issue for the Family Arena were actually leasehold revenue bonds in 1998. Original debt service on the arena, I think, was around 36 million, 36, 37 million.
Long ago, I forgot. Tried to block it out.
Were there any...
On the Page Avenue Bridge loan from the road board?
No. In February of 2012, is that right? Yeah, February of 2012, the county was required to put up our $25 million portion of the Page Avenue extension and we paid for that out of reserves. There was no borrowing there. We did talk about having to possibly do some tax anticipation notes, as Don is talking about, where we're basically borrowing on next years or a couple of years' worth of transportation sales tax revenues. But with the timing of projects that we had in the pipeline at the time and delays that were out there on some projects, we were able to make the $25 million payment at one time and not incur any indebtedness issue costs or interest on any future payments. So we wrote the check and moved on from there.
Quick check.
Could I add one?
Sure.
Generally speaking, in Missouri, the statutes allow municipalities and counties to incur bonded indebtedness to the tune of 10% of the body's assessed valuation. So if you look at Page Four of your budget, you'll see that our assessed valuation this year is anticipated to be $7 billion. So that would mean that the ceiling, generally speaking, would be approximately 700 million that you bump up against before you would start having to get fancy with the numbers. So you can see relative to Bob's information here, we are very low debt entity.
I had asked Joanne, the regions with like Decker Creek and St. Charles County Water and all that, those are no direct obligations to county, okay? So basically, we got about $43 million worth of long-term debt that's being paid out of capital improvement sales tax revenue. Fair statement?
Yeah. Correct.
Better than I thought.
All right. Any other questions concerning that? Okay. Next, I believe we had a question about the, I guess go back to the parks and the family arena. Do you wanna, you know, ask?
Yeah, with what Bob's saying now, though, I mean, you could use some of Parks' monies maybe to prop up the operating budget of that arena, but you really couldn't use Parks' money to pay those bonds because that's a dedicated revenue stream from capital improvement sales taxes. Fair? Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, capital improvements is for the acquisition of major projects.
And what I was driving at with that is, when you see the revenue stream for parks, it's six, seven million dollars use tax money and sooner or later, we're gonna run out of parks to develop and parks to acquire. So knowing that the Family Arena was a amenity, recreational amenity, no differently than like a youth activity park, what would be the, you know, option of using some of that money that was dedicated to help Family Arena? It looks to me like the bonds are in pretty good shape. I think overall, though, you're, you know, depending on the year, you still have to prop up the Family Arena to some extent. And I mean, I think that's might be a discussion we might want to have about using some of that money. So that, right now, Bob, when Family Arena comes into shortfall, if the operating expenses are half a million, million dollars more than what the Family Arena takes in, that money then come out of general revenue?
It's not coming out of general revenue. We're tracking the cumulative loss, you know, so it's shown on our balance sheet as like an intercompany type of receivable and payable right now so that we could track that cumulative number. So it's not incurred necessarily by the general fund every year as a direct operating expense, but if it were to, if the Family Arena were to stop operating for some reason, we'd have to come up with the, it would be an accounting entry really more than anything else since the cash is already gone.
Two and a half million dollars of annual bond payments, so that's coming out of a dedicated revenue stream.
Right, right.
So we're good at that. So the only really cost of that arena to the general budget would be if it's running in a deficit for particular...
For operating. And actually, there's a general, there's also a dedicated fund that the city of St. Charles makes, up to 300,000, depending upon the events and...
What about for improvements and upgrades of the Family Arena? Where's that money coming from?
Capital improvements.
Capital improvements tax. And you saw those things in the plan.
Right.
So there's some, a few roof issues and there's some maintenance that we'll need to do there and there's a storage issue that you saw in that plan.
Right.
For a storage building. And so anything that you see that we're spending on upgrades to that building will always appear in the capital improvements plan.
Is it possible to use some of those Parks funds to upgrade the arena or is that, is it pretty great moving Parks Fund's money into that?
Well, those are, those are two pots that are pretty full compared to the general revenue. So we've been, over the years, tried to find ways to assess things to capital or to assess to the Park Fund. And I know we talked, I assume we're gonna go through with it. Betty was gonna go ahead, now that we have ice down here, we're gonna have open skates.
That's already underway.
We're having open skates for the public and because we're doing that, we can assess the Parks Fund a certain percentage of the cost of maintaining the ice.
Correct.
So, I mean, that's just one kind of creative thing that we've come up with.
Well, in addition to that, you know, we had this sort of debacle that lasted, what, 10 months or 15 months or whatever, where the street decision in Missouri held that out-of-state car sales were a use tax item as were used car sales and that's now gotten fixed of this year. But we had a full year plus of revenues that fell into that, decreasing what was coming into our general fund and so...
Increasing the Park Fund, though.
And increasing the Park Fund. So we did look at, that's a separate reportable. We knew exactly the additional monies and those monies were then taken to, you know, the general use of recreation at the Family Arena to cover what would have previously come out of GR. So we did some of that in last year's budget and this year's budget, 12 and 13.
You know, I think, you know, it is a Parks and Recreation Department, okay? And Family Arena is recreation. So I don't think you'll get any argument, at least from me and maybe the rest of the council, about you propping up any losses of the Family Arena from Parks money instead of freeing up some money for general revenue. I know Mr. Gross was a big advocate of that because we talked about that in depth.
And we did that last year and we're doing it this year. I think, though, that what we're looking at first is developing the land that we got, which is what the money was originally intended for, you know, it's a dedicated use, and also trying to do some acquisition, as you alluded to, through the holes in the Parks Plan. I mean, there's a lot of parkland in District Two and it's beautifully developed. There's some good big park in District One. There's some things that are in the northern part of District Six, but there's not a lot of parkland developed in the other areas. And so that's something that we're continuously on the lookout, trying to find, because there's not a lot of big tracks either anymore, trying to find land, especially on the eastern side of the county. And we've been in hot pursuit of some of the last decent tracks that are out there. So that's obviously, I mean, we're obviously not buying any of that without coming to you all, but, you know, that's something that we've understood was a priority, that there's been a lot of discussion about the fact that we need parks in the eastern part of the county.
Getting back to the Family Arena, very quickly, bottom line this year, do we anticipate breaking even?
No, there's gonna be a loss. They have a very busy December, so we're hoping that it's gonna get closer to breaking even, but they're not gonna break completely even.
We should be cautiously optimistic about next year, though, shouldn't we?
We are cautiously optimistic because all the events, I mean, they're working hard on keeping the place open with events that we earn money on. And that's meant to some extent, we're less in the general concert business where some of the big losses were taken.
Right.
And more in the events that we know are popular, we know are sellouts or that, you know, pull a general crowd base that covers their costs and give them some small measure of earnings.
And just to the ambush, we had almost 7,000 people at their game, so...
They had a good crowd.
Yeah. It looks like we're turning a corner at least. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. And we kinda danced around it or maybe I got lost in the discussion. If a capital improvement needs to be made down there or decide to be made... If a capital improvement needs to be made down there, or decide to be made, a new video screen board, or a new flooring in the lobby, can that be taken out of the county use tax, the Parks' tax, versus the capital improvement sales tax? I didn't say, it's been our practice, I ask, can I...
The decision would first have to be made as to whether Parks is going to subsidize anything outside of Parks. And if that decision is made, there would be nothing to keep you from doing that. But as county executive said, Parks has a fair amount of money, capital projects has a fair amount of money.
The way the use tax got passed, is there anything that prohibits it from being used at the family arena?
You'd have to make the interpretation of...
That's part of the...
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Who gets to make that determination?
With some advice from Harold.
Okay.
We can make the determination, but some judge may disagree with us.
Okay. All right. Moving on. Yes, you still have...
On page five of the budget, and Joanne and I talked a little bit about this, but I just like to be a little warmer and fuzzy about it. If you look across where the total revenue and total expenses are from '11 to date, okay? Total revenue's been pretty, it's pretty consistent from 2011 to '14, between $192 and about $203 million, okay? But when you go down and look at expenditures, it goes from $167 to $190 to $263 to $284 is what's requested issue. You see expenditures rising significantly, a lot more than revenue. And I had some concerns when I see these numbers. If I see these numbers in my household budget or my business budget, and I see my revenue's pretty flat when my expenses are going up a bunch, it sets off flags and alarms. Joanne kind of told me that some of this was estimated, and she didn't think the numbers were going to grow as quite as large as what they're showing here.
Well, if I can be a little more specific, when you see '11's actual and '12's actuals, what you're seeing on the bottom line are also a number of large fund items that don't have all the money appropriated for the road and bridge fund don't happen in a single year. With regard to our personnel budget, which is obviously a major item, we have people leave, and it takes a while to refill the jobs, you know, between interviewing and, you know, you get two weeks notice from somebody, but it takes a lot more than two weeks. So we get a lot of laps from job changes. There's probably many other things that I'm not mentioning. So what you're seeing at the bottom of '11 and at the bottom of '12 are the end result of what actually the give and take of the government funds is. What you're seeing in '13's estimate and what you're seeing in '14 is a very conservative in the '13 estimate of what we think will be the final ending fund balance. So we try to anticipate everything, Debbie does a lot of work around this, of trying to figure out everything that she thinks people are actually going to spend this year. So that $121 may end up being low. It would not be a happy day for us if it was high. We would not like to find out we were off and that it was on the high side. So then, same way for '14, we act as though everything that people have asked be appropriated and that we've recommended to you is actually going to be spent. But that ending fund balance, we know, will most likely be much, much higher than what we're anticipating. Because just as a matter of approach, we have to assume that anything that we've asked you to appropriate and you agree to appropriate will actually occur. Bob may want to throw anything?
Essentially, you've been spending a lot, consistently spending quite a bit less of what's been appropriated.
Right.
So that's where the numbers look skewed.
Right. And you can't avoid that because of the, I mean, obviously, what, 85% of our budget gets spent on personnel, or 80% of, not the budget overall, but in the operating funds for general funds. So as people leave, as you have people, and that turnover occurs, you're constantly gaining back funds that don't get spent in that year. So you're always going to have that, you're always going to have things like the transportation fund where all the projects don't go forward. So you end up with the laps from that, so...
He's pretty confident, basically, revenue and expenditures are going to balance out. It's pretty close, that they're up in the past year.
Yes.
The biggest variable, John, or Joe, is on the, as far as big-ticket items are concerned, really, is the, are the transportation projects. I mean, if you have the large capital items, and if you're going to spend $5 million in one year to pay off and then complete the work in Brahmsig, and you've got road projects out there that are multimillion-dollar projects apiece, and, you know, those large-ticket items may get deferred for a year or two, but they're appropriated every year. And then finally, you get to the point of construction and completion, and you're writing the big check at that point. But we have to appropriate on the basis of having the funds there in the event that the work is done. So we budget out here for our expenses, and at the same time, on the revenue side, we don't want to be betting on the if come here. And we are very conservative on the other side, on the revenue side, by making sure that we don't overestimate, and we don't overobligate ourselves, and we don't wind up having an appropriation that we can't write the check for at the end of the year. So we have kind of a, two things going in opposite directions here. We're budgeting conservatively on the revenue side, and we're budgeting more aggressively on the expenditure side and creating that gap that, at the end of the year, when everything all trues up, all of a sudden, we're out there with the fund balances that we've seen historically.
Bob, if I could add one example of what he's talking about, it's a smaller item, but I think it shows exactly what we do. And that is, on the 401K match for employees, we budget based upon the maximum, if every employee took the max, we know we're near that number, but it's budgeted for every year in case lightning went strike and every employee would ask for the max. I don't know what the, I don't know what it is, but it's a small percentage of what could possibly be taken.
Yeah, and in that specific case, 2/3 or slightly less than 2/3 of our employees who are eligible actually participate in the match program. That other 3 that's in budget every year winds up to be part of that lapse that we see at the end of the year. But we're budgeting for the fact that if everybody signs up, then the money has to be there to fund it.
They'll sign up now, Don. There you go.
We wish they would.
We've been trying to get them to sign up, but there are some people who feel they can't.
I wish, or would.
Okay. Moving on. I believe, Councilman Baff, I believe you have some questions.
I was just, Joanne called me, I just wanted to know, with you guys, I guess what I understand is, you give an incentive for education, incentive for associates and bachelor's degrees?
For deputy sheriffs.
For deputy sheriffs only. And is that going to be expanded to all employees?
No.
Never, eventually, or...
Well, we haven't looked at expanding it. I mean, there are some employees who obviously aren't happy about that. I just took a blast at an employee meeting last week about that. But it was really something where a number of years ago, we had, I guess Steve was Director of Administration, we had some lawsuits related to that department that it was really kind of clear that we needed to expand some people's general scope. And so we made that available, and I think it really has made a difference in the general approach to the public that a number of folks have. And, you know, a lot of deputy sheriffs have taken advantage of that incentive.
So I guess the question would be, is, what we talked on the phone, is, if they're a veteran, should they be afforded that same sort of, you know, opportunity, like, if it's a, whether it be an associate, the same as an associate's or a bachelor's degree, so they get some credit for that? Because that would be some sort of training and so forth.
Well, and what I, I called Joe Friday night, because I talked to Steve recently. For the past six months or so, we've been looking at what are good practices that are out there for governments and for, in fact, businesses with regard to veterans in the job market. And we're continuing to look at that, and so I told him that we would look at this as part of overall what we would be bringing to you all in '14 to adopt as a best practices. But this is, you know, at the stage that we're at, what Joe's looking for is a very big study. I mean, we don't even know how many veterans we actually have in county government. For instance, a couple of years ago, you did a little program to honor some Vietnam-era vets that lived in the county, and yet, sitting there that night, I realized we have several combat Vietnam-era vets who worked for St. Charles County, and none of them were even called that night, you know? So I mean, we need to understand a lot about who's here and from what campaigns and, you know, what things we're trying to give them a good association with the county for. So, I mean, under what circumstances do we recognize veteran skills? How do we best get the best kind of veterans into the county? What do we also recommend to our employers in the county? We're looking at all that.
Okay. So I guess, when I called you on the phone, I was, I guess I was confused. When we, in our last meeting, you mentioned that the death benefit for county employees has been expanded across the board, correct?
Well, we're creating it. We didn't have one before.
Right.
It'll be created in '14.
Okay, and that's great. Yeah, that's good. But the education fund, I thought that was, that's, did you say you were looking at doing it across the board if it's associated?
No, we didn't look at it across the board.
As you know, if we were going to do this, we would try to do it for everybody. We do our raises for everybody. The exception to that is this deputy sheriff's education. And so the question might come, well, why them and not everybody else? It's because we have such, so much more potential liability for the job that they do, that I think we can justify spending money and giving them money to try to get better educated, which then will hopefully limit our liability to some extent. If we got sued as much, if our highway department got sued as much as our sheriff's department, I'd probably be here asking you to do the same sort of thing for the people in the highway department. But they don't, thank God. And that's, if anybody ever asks you, that's why, that's why the deputies get a better deal than anybody else on, when it comes to education.
So I guess my question would be then, Joanne, is, if we're doing it for the deputies, at this time, should we look at, and I guess the cost is not, is the unknown answer, but do we give the deputies some acknowledgement of the education fund if they're a veteran? As they would if it's associated with career or something? That was my question. When I originally asked you that, I thought that everybody got that, but if we're doing it for deputies, maybe we'd look into that. If it's not in place this year, as you said, we'd look at it.
Right. We'll look at it in terms of what would the cost be, what would the advantages be, what are we actually recognizing? You know, is it a skill set that we're recognizing, or is it just a nod to the fact that they served our country in that way? So we got to look at all that, and we got to look at what that cost would be.
Okay. That's fine. I mean, yeah, next year, just put it on the table, you know?
We will. Like I said, we've already been, we met with, what was the...
Eric Greitens and The Mission Continues.
Eric Greitens, his group, The Mission Continues, and talked about exactly these issues. I mean, what, you know, what can we do to help the returning veterans over the last, you know, 10 or 20 years? And you've been trying to get, Arizona, I think, has...
Yeah, Arizona has done a lot of work with their Chamber of Commerce around best practices for helping veterans back into the job market and doing that in an appropriate way. We've been trying to get that program description from them. So we're working on that the last couple of weeks, too, so...
Can you explain a little more on the line of duty? If an officer was killed in the line of duty, we're going to expand those benefits?
Yeah, right now, for the last, gosh, five years or more, or longer than that, that we've had for every employee in the county, a life insurance policy equal, that we pay for as a county, that's equal to their annual salary.
Okay.
So anybody, not just a deputy, anybody at all. What we started looking at with all these issues around health insurance and how expensive health insurance is becoming on the open market, that if an employee of ours, a highway worker, you know, somebody kills a lady who's sitting behind the counter collecting taxes, that their ability to participate in our healthcare plan is dependent upon the fact that their spouse or parent is employed here.
Right.
So what we proposed to Steve, and he approved for us to bring to you all, is that if an employee is killed in the line of duty, not has a heart attack or something like that, but is killed in the line of duty, that their spouse or their children would participate in, have the ability to participate in our healthcare plan as if their spouse or parent was still alive at the rates that they pay until the spouse is either on Medicare or remarries, or until the children are 26 or on another healthcare plan.
So I did understand that they would pay in at the regular employee level, not the total.
Just as if their family member is still alive, so...
Good.
And that, you'll see it worded in the December ordinance, and so if, God forbid, we would have an employee who was killed whose spouse was pregnant at the time of his death, then she would have the same ability to option into the plan within 30 days after the birth of the child, for the child as well. So it's just as if the employee is still alive, they continue to participate.
Oh, I like that. I think it's very good.
Just an idea on that, the rates that the county pays for insurance is significantly less than you can get in the private sector.
Right.
Even if you expanded that and allowed people that even died under natural causes to, that were dependents of county employees, to go on that insurance at the actual cost to St. Charles County have that, it'd probably be a great benefit to your existing employees at no cost to county help.
It would be, but here's the risk. Because we're self-insured, you know, I mean, you're taking on the risk that in that total pool of employees, you would have heart transplants, lung transplants...
Cancer.
Cancer, et cetera. And so, you know, after we gave Mr. Noonan a little Valium and told him to calm down and figure out the relative risk to us, you know, and he looked at that, and then he was very supportive of it, but he was like, you know, really, we don't have an experience with it, there's no way to tell what's going to happen here, you have to be cautious about expanding the pool because we are self-insured. It's a first step. I mean, if you all told us, go back and do the other, that's...
It's a very good first, it's a feel-good first step.
It is.
But it's so minute that, I mean, we can talk about it and feel good about it, but it doesn't really apply in the last 50 years to very many people.
Because 1976 was the last time we had an employee killed in the line of duty. Now, if you all want us to go out and study what natural deaths, how that would change, what are our experiences, we can do that, but...
I think we ought to take a look at it, because really, in the last almost 40 years now, it's only applied to one family, so it didn't really expand our pool at all, one family worth. I don't, I have no idea how many people have died natural deaths during their employment here in this county. I wouldn't even begin to fathom what that number could be.
And I don't really know either. I mean, in the last 18 years, I can think of a handful of people who died while they were employed here.
Just a couple of years I've been here, Mr. Copley, the gentleman that worked in your office, probably.
Right.
I mean, I think that would be a good benefit, and I understand that the self-insurance risk, but maybe you could take, for instance, retirees, don't they pay the counties' actual cost plus 5%?
Plus 2, I think.
Something like that. Maybe it could be that level, plus a little bit to throw that self-insurance fund to level it out. I mean, because I tell you, if you lose county insurance as an employee, you have to go out, your spouse has to go out on her own and buy it. You can't buy it for...
Nobody wants to be in the healthcare market right now.
It's pretty bad.
Well, I don't know how this would actually work out, but I know some businesses around the county have a sliding scale for their employees based upon their health. I mean, there are some people who, if they're diabetic and they're on their medication and they're treating their diabetes... and they're treating their diabetes, they get to buy in at the lower level. If they smoke, they have to pay a higher level, a higher premium price because they are a higher health risk, therefore, you're costing the company potentially more money. I don't know how that all breaks out and how it would work for us, but I wouldn't be opposed to seeing something like that where if the employee is being a responsible health employee, if you will, however we word that out. Speaking of Harold, so, you know, working on something like that, that you put them in that pool because it does decrease the risk a lot more. But if somebody's going to continue to have, you know, poor health and not do anything about it, and then the odds of them leaving us earlier than others who are taking care of themselves go up quite a bit, so.
Well, if you want everybody to have the same benefit, we simply agree to raise the amount of health of life insurance instead of making their salary make it one and a half times their salary. And then, they've got more money so that they can buy insurance.
Buy the insurance.
But, you know, that would, you know, so, I think if we're going to look at the cost, we ought to compare it to something like that as well.
No, that's a good thought.
Or two times.
The county used to offer, and it still does, that you can purchase additional life insurance instead of.
Yep.
Pretty small amount.
Every year during open enrollment, and it's, you know, competitively then rates.
I think it's up to three times salary currently, going to four times salary next year. But anything beyond one time salary is at the employee's cost.
And what is that cost?
It depends on your age. It's like any other life insurance. If you're an old guy like me, you're going to pay a lot more.
At like 55, it's like a dollar a month per thousand of insurance that you want to find.
Yep.
Dollar ten or something like that.
It's not a bad price. No, it's not, it's a fairly priced product.
On the Jerry side of that range.
It's kind of a dependence rate.
Other concerns or questions?
I just have one. With the, I guess it's something for Jennifer, probably, but with the $24 million in the radio bonds that were sold to pay for the system, are we approximately in budget for the radio system? And also, with the use streams, user streams of revenue coming in from the fire departments and police departments within the county, does the budget look pretty good as far as the amount of money coming in? Is it going to be enough to pay for the operation system? Does the money coming in from the capital improvement sales tax going to be enough to retire the bonds without putting the burden on the county?
Bob, answer any of the questions related to the bonds and the tax question. In terms of how we're doing an overall budget for the project, we're on track right now. We've had, I think, three fully executed change orders. We've got another one that's in process. So, with each one of those change orders, you see a little bit of up and down, but we are on track to stay on budget for the outright purchase of the system. In terms of designing the budget for the 25-year life of the system, we have set up those subscriber maintenance fees that would be collected from all of the user districts and entities to only collect that budget hole that we need to fill over the life of the system. So, we're not making any money off of operating the system. Right now, we have set those fees at what we anticipate that gap being over the 25-year life of the system, but have allowed for, in the intergovernmental agreement that we are all executing now for operation of the system, allowing the commission that's created or committee, I forget what we have ended up calling it, of representatives from all of the jurisdictions to go back.
Working group.
No, there's a committee above the working group. I forget what we ended up, radio policy commission, perhaps, I think is what the name was.
Radio groupies.
But that group will go back and look at how we're doing an overall budget for that 25 years. So, if we end up bringing in additional co-locators off of the system, or if our projections on what we'll pay in electrical bills at all of the tower sites is dramatically less than we have otherwise projected at this time, that they'll reduce those maintenance and subscriber fees to not collect more than necessary. So, overall, we're staying on track.
You've got a mechanism built in to maintain that budget, then?
Correct.
Okay. And the capital improvement money, is that enough to retire the bonds?
We have, yes. And we, as Jennifer was saying, we've run the budget out 22 years from now, which from the start of the project is almost a 25-year budget, just to run things out. And it's going to carry the water and.
We haven't anticipated that quarter, that, I'm sorry.
1/20.
1/20 needs to stay in place over that entire 22 years. And in fact, in the intergovernmental agreement that we've done with the cities to protect the microwave for now zones and about the radio counts and keeping everything up, we've asked the cities for a commitment that they recognize that we need the municipal support for the re-up of that tax when it comes up in the 2020s, whenever the council determines to put it on. And they all understand that, and they've all been supportive of that. But we thought it was a good idea to lay it out so that there's a history there and that future counties and the municipalities understand that that's a key part of this.
20, 25 years from now, probably have to do all over again the next greatest step now.
That's true. That's very true. I mean, they're projecting 20 years out that the data lines that you use for texting and for all that is also going to carry voice in a much higher quality than current radio waves do. So, I mean, there's all kinds of work being done in the industries to try to do that to give law enforcement and fire a hardened system that is least interruptible when there's a disaster.
Well, Jennifer will be well experienced in doing it 20, 25 years from now, and she'll probably be the only one who'll still be here.
Oh, no, I'm going to hobble in right next to her.
Other questions? Does anyone else have any budget concerns, questions? Does anyone see any need to go by, go department by department through this? I don't see a need myself. Anything you all would like to convey to us that we have not asked?
No, those are the questions that we got.
If I might just do this, the executive recommended budget is what you're looking at here that was put together a few weeks ago, end of October. When the budget ordinance comes to you all next week for the introduction of the budget ordinance, we'll have for you a summary of changes that have taken place that are, since this budget was drafted, which largely are just personnel types of situations and, you know, just so you all see, when you look at the numbers that are on the budget that you're going to be looking at next week, there are going to be some minor changes. So, anything that changed in the context of the entire budget over these last few weeks will be encapsulated onto that summary so you'll be able to see what items took place and what funds to translate from the recommended budget to the budget that's being introduced for the budget ordinance.
Bob wants to see how the Black Friday goes.
I'm not changing the sales tax number.
Sales tax number. Well, and Steve's questioning me just now, I'll just give up, for instance, Dave came in and visited with me after the last meeting and said that he had noticed in the budget that there was 4 tenths of an employee going to building as a building inspector, too. And that had really been based on the fact that after the tornado, the department, it happened on a gentleman who only wanted to work part-time at the time, and he was a great assistance in getting inspections done. But he actually has taken a job someplace else since the department requested that. And Dave pointed out that it takes a long time to build up the necessary certifications an inspector really has to have, and that he suggested that since that was no longer going to happen, that that was probably not a 4 tenths that we could actually fill on the market, not to speak for you. And he suggested instead, we put in a 1.
An entry level.
An entry level and have a couple of years before we had to use that person fully to get the certifications done. And so, we looked into that. In fact, you know, that particular division is self-funded because of their permit fees, and there is sufficient there because of an uptick we had in two months this year to just get that done. So, we're going to be making that change of taking out the 4 tenths of the 2-level person and putting instead in an entry level 1 and bringing the person in and getting them trained over the next couple of years so that they're ready. We have some people in that division who probably, we're guessing, and it's never appropriate to guess by age, but because one of them is, if you're between 65 and 70, let's put it that way, that we probably are anticipating that sometime in the next 2, 3, 5, 10 years that the person will retire. So, you know, as Dave said, let's home grow a guy that we know can do this job. Instead of, you know, just having 4 tenths we can't fill. So, you'll be seeing that change.
I think, isn't video uplink going to be one of those changes, too, from East-West?
Yeah, East-West Gateway gave us a grant for video uplink between the police cars in the region and the helicopter so that they can, you know, the helicopter has a FLIR system in it that allows you to track people by body heat and also camera. And they then funded the downlink so that they can send that video down into police cars throughout the region.
Nice.
And so, there, you know, we have to accommodate that grant.
We're doing that in conjunction with St. Louis County, too.
Right.
So, it's a $203,000 grant that will be spent, and I think that'll be one of the changes you'll see in what's coming for introduction next week.
We were driving down to the East-West Gateway annual meeting, was it last week or two weeks ago?
Before that.
Huh? With Dave Todd, and he got a thing on his radio that somebody had robbed a store in St. Peters, and the helicopter was after them. They were running through the subdivision.
Yeah, they were tracking them from there.
And they were tracking them with the helicopter. I assume they got them.
They did. And, you know, I mean, once they have your body heat signature on the camera as well as video, whereas just with camera, they might lose you in a tree canopy, but with the body heat signal on the FLIR system as well, I guess it's pretty hard to lose you. So, it's a pretty sophisticated.
Criminals take note.
Perps beware.
You should. And yes, if somebody is out there planning to be a criminal, they should take.
If you wear an insulated coat, can you avoid the body?
Pull that out at the last second.
As I think everybody knows from the Boston bombing, no matter what you pull over you in terms of things, it's pretty difficult to erase that body.
Even if you hide in a boat.
Even if you hide in a boat with four or five layers of stuff over you to try to erase the heat signature.
Yep.
And that system is pretty much what we bought.
I have one question. Are we anticipating any sort of changes in the landscape of business in the county over this next year? Like in talking with the folks at Partners and some of the studies that they've done, I know the home builders we're in are talking to us about doing some different type of building projects in the county. Are we anticipating anything like that, sort of changing the landscaping of the county economically?
I don't really think so in any large measure. I think the way the county executive mentioned it in his budget message, that we're going to, we intend to see and expect to see modest improvement again next year, kind of in all fronts.
Okay.
But I can't think of anything that's going to just dramatically make a large impact at one time with anything. Certainly, over the long haul, completion of 364 next year is going to. Open up a brand-new corridor through the county, which could be the catalyst for some things in future years that begin to develop along there. Darden, I know, is proposing the 85 or 86 acre shopping center at Bryant and Fizey Roads there, which is a stone's throw from I-70, from 364. So, you could see some development along that corridor that's in future years.
You've got to remember that John so often points out, and he's absolutely correct, our property taxes are so low, we don't see much of an impact from a new house.
Right.
What we see impact is a new person bringing dollars into the county and then spending them here and getting sales tax.
Well, we've been talking about that economic study of the I-70 corridor and a mile either way of that, and trying to make sure that that stays relevant, if you will. I'm a little concerned about the developments in Chesterfield and pulling money out of that. I don't know what the county's responsibility would be of this, but just some sort of an awareness campaign that we could somehow put together of, you know, they have shop-local type campaigns, whether it's shop-local St. Charles, keep it in the O for O'Fallon, or what have you. But just something like that, just to remind people of, hey, when you go to that outlet mall in Chesterfield, that's all well, cool, and fine until the fact that.
How about a big billboard that shows the relative sales tax rates?
I think we better have a shopper's toll on the bridge.
You know, we thought that the outlet malls could really put a dent, but our August numbers were pretty much what we thought.
Yeah, our August numbers were good. And you've got to watch the long haul, though. A number of factors can play into that, but yeah, our August numbers were surprising. Now, Don Daebury was talking about the fact that this is the latest Thanksgiving that you can have in November, and so, we have a shortened Christmas buying season, and very little of November has any Christmas shopping season in it this year. So, we may see some downturn on the November numbers that we get in January. But at this point, we'll just.
Well, for all of us guys, we won't still, we won't shop till December 21st, 4th, 4th, whatever. Anyway.
They're trying to make up for it by starting on Thanksgiving night at 8 o'clock.
No, I think it starts tomorrow.
It's already started out there.
You know, I was at Mid Rivers Mall this past weekend, and I did notice they have, they do have some outlet stores in there, so.
They do.
I might want to shop there. See if they're going all the way to Chesterfield.
It's kind of nice because the general manager of the mall was talking about at the Mid Rivers ribbon cutting, opening that overpass about, they've put $3 million into, is it CBL? Is that the company who owns the mall? So, they've put $3 million in improvements in the mall. They've gotten rid of a lot of the 80s decor that was in there. They brought it up to where it's much nicer. They've got really nice holiday decorations. So, I mean, the mall is staying up, and they've had a lot of their big tenants who have expanded their area and paid more from that individual business to be a part of it.
No Tiff involved.
So, it's.
Wow.
You know, go figure. People did that.
And we're supposed to have a really cold December, so they won't want to be in those outdoor outlet malls over in Chesterfield.
Yeah, it's awfully nice to shop indoors.
Holdover at Chesterfield.
That weekend they opened, though, I mean, I drove through there, and I think the line, there was lines backed up on the highway in both directions, and I think the line from St. Charles County was longer than the line from St. Louis County. So, when people complain about us never paying any taxes over in St. Louis County to support what's going on over there, remind them that we pay a lot of sales taxes.
Could we do a billboard, Steve? Or could we pay for a billboard? I mean, could we do that, or is that not, is that not the right thing to do?
Because it's kind of a better.
It's something better for the Chamber of Commerce to do.
The billboard the city of St. Charles used to put out that had two guys in a canoe, canoeing out by Warrenton, right city? Do you remember that? And some of the local guys got the bow and arrows out and riddled the canoe full of arrows.
Can we hit some of those sites up on 79? That'd be good for a billboard.
Hey, you know, if we could change that to a linear.
Get back to a serious discussion.
You're losing control.
I think it's time to wrap it up here, folks.
An ad hoc committee would be a great idea, Terry. Put together a marketing campaign.
Yeah, but that Joe was.
All right. Well, thank you, folks, and thank you from the administration here, answering our questions. our questions.